Can you go ahead and call this July 1st, 2019 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order? Thanks, everyone, for coming this evening. I see that my mother is in the audience, so I did ask her to please lead us tonight in the pledge of allegiance, please.
(laughing). Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Thanks, Mom. We'll move on to item three of the agenda, which is communications from the public. And this is time set aside for the public to comment on any item you would like to that are not currently advertised as a public hearing on our agenda. And we do have four public hearings this evening. And just for the record, your name and address when you approach the podium.
Hi there, I'm Leo Keen, 514 Pine Place in Whitefish. I'm here also as the owner's rep for the first public hearing for Heidi Jacobson later on if there are any questions. But the reason I'm speaking right now is my concern about the densities which this council has been approving on developments around town. It's come up before, time and time again, that oftentimes the density of the proposals are far greater than what is appropriate for the neighborhoods. And usually what we hear from the council is that our hands are tied, this is the way of zoning, we cannot approve it because this is the way it's zoned. So I think my point is that probably our zoning might, we might need to start taking a look at that. Perhaps it's outdated, it's antiquated, it's from how many years ago was our city zoned? Twenty years, thirty? Totally different time. I think it's time for us to start looking at what would be best for our town, for the enjoyment of the folks who live here, not necessarily for developers, for them to come in and build 54-unit apartment buildings like we're going to have a public hearing on July 18th on Skiles Avenue, the huge development on Wisconsin Avenue, another one on Edgewood, one on Colorado, all bringing in lots of people. Wisconsin Avenue is already dysfunctional and many streets in town are getting to the point where they are dysfunctional. And I think we're, as I said last time, I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot. We're kind of wrecking what we like about Whitefish to accommodate developers, of which I am one, but I would prefer, in my work, to be doing things that are appropriate for the location, for the neighborhood, and for the town. What's the saying, "If you build it, they will come"? Well, if you don't build it, they won't be able to come, and maybe that's something we should consider. Maybe it's time to slow down and not be so eager to approve 54-unit apartment buildings on Skiles Avenue. It's just going to be a disaster for the neighborhood and for Wisconsin Avenue. It's going to just keep getting worse and worse. I hope that the council at some point can discuss that, the possibility of looking at our zoning and is this an appropriate time to reconsider zoning for the town and maybe do something, start making some changes. I think folks who live in those neighborhoods would appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Leo. Appreciate the comments. David?
My name is Dave DeGrandprey. I am representing, I work as a land use planner, I'm representing the Bauer Family Partnership. It's item number five on your agenda, the conditional annexation. Just a few quick comments. I know that a conditional annexation is a little bit peculiar, something you probably haven't seen before. If you've looked at your, the report that was provided in your packet, you'll see that the property was historically zoned, this is back when the city of Whitefish had zoning jurisdiction over land in the Donut area, it was zoned WB2. Since the county was granted zoning jurisdiction, they applied a similar zoning. And so the peculiar, or from what I understand, from talking with your public works director, also your planning director, it's really a matter of course, or a matter of policy, that when land is annexed into the city, that the city applies the most, I guess, compatible city zoning with the county zoning. This is normal, you know, operating procedure. The one peculiarity here is that when the growth policy was adopted, this property, it's five acres, located at the intersection of Highway 93 and Highway 40, which has four fire hydrants on it, it has, I believe sewer facilities very close by, it's ready to be developed. But the growth policy, for some reason, the future land use map labels this as suburban residential. Strange designation, because if you look at the corresponding, you know, in a growth policy, you've got these general land use kind of umbrella-type designations, so this is suburban residential. And those designations correspond with specific zoning designations. The zoning, the corresponding zoning designations are country residential, state residential, suburban residential. These are all single-family districts with lot sizes, minimum lot size between one and two and a half acres. And so it was zoned, at the time that a suburban residential growth policy designation was given to it, it was actually zoned secondary business. So it's kind of a, there's kind of a conflict. What I'm here to do is to ask simply that when you, if, assuming you annex the property, that you apply the WB2 zoning designation, because that's in line with the current designation and also what the city of Whitefish had zoned it before. So we're simply looking for you to continue your policy, do nothing special, annex the property, hopefully you will, hopefully you'll find it to be in your best interest, and then also apply the designation that is historic and fits. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Further public comment this evening? Sir? That's a public hearing, Scott, so we'll wait to take public comment when I call that individual hearing. Thanks. Further public comments? Not seeing any, I'll move on to item four of the agenda, any changes or additions to the June 17th meeting minutes, or can I have a motion for approval? Richard?
How did you know?
Well, guess.
In terms of, on page 31 in the minutes, the paragraph beginning Bruce Booty, they are, I think the word should be agreement rather than agreeance with the findings of fact. And then continuing on to the next sentence, he addressed planner, and it brought up, the sentence is a little convoluted, he addressed, I don't know quite how that sentence goes, but it does need a little bit of work. If you want me to, I can work on that later, but I think we ought to move on.
That's fine.
Then on page 33, Mark Panasiti stated that he will be moving in if this building is, says designed, but I think approved is the word that goes there. And then continuing on, he stated that they are all bad developers. I think he meant to say they, he stated that they are not all bad developers. So I think we can make that correction. Page 35, into that paragraph at the top of the page, the sentence, hang on, if people are, the word should be de facto, two words, D E and then F A C O, rather than de factor. And that's it.
With that said, do you have a motion as amended? That's corrected?
Sure, I'll go ahead and move that we approve the consent agenda as corrected.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Secuted by Counselor Williams, further discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand, those opposed, like sign, and the motion carries unanimously, Michelle. Which brings us on to item five, which is our one annexation this evening, Resolution 19-12, a resolution extending the corporate limits of the city of Whitefish, Montana to conditionally annex within the boundaries of the city approximately 5.42 acres of land referred to as 6045 Highway 93 South in Whitefish, for which the owner has petitioned for and consented to annexation. Angie?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My report begins on page 202 of the packet, and I think Dave did a really good job of kind of reiterating why we're here. Under Montana law, we can annex those property owners that petitioned to be annexed, and the council can do so, approve or disapprove the petition on its merits. So as he stated, the Bauer Family Partnership owns the property to the north of Highway 40, it is within our city's Extension of Services Plan, which is required if it's going to be annexed. It's currently zoned County B4 with a highway overlay, which is comparable to the city's WB2 secondary business district zoning. Prior determination of our Donut authority, the property was zoned WB2. For some reason, when the 2007 growth policy was adopted, the property was designated as suburban residential, which would correspond to WCR, WER, and WSR. So the property owner has petitioned the city for conditional annexation. Under the proposed petition, the annexation would become effective only if the property zones, or the city zones the property WB2. If the city zones it with any other zoning designation, the petition is considered withdrawn. There's really nothing in Montana law that either authorizes or forbids conditional annexation, the law doesn't really speak to it. We have DMX property before, in particular the Tate property on the lake, I think it was a couple of years ago. And given that the council's required by both state law and local law to determine that proposed zoning is made in accordance with the growth policy, I can understand why the property owner would have some concern with annexing not conditionally and having the city's own the property, something other than. But again, we generally don't downzone property. If it was, don't zone WB2, in the past, we generally do zone it WB2. There's no immediate financial requirements. If the property ultimately does come in to city boundaries, we will receive some increased tax revenue. Again, there's nothing in the law that either authorizes or forbids it. I do have a little bit of heartburn that allowing it will, can create a precedent for other property owners. But again, I would also point out that it's a situation that the property owner didn't really create, the city kind of created the situation for the property owner. So be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Angie. Any questions for Angie on her staff report? Frank?
Angie, did you, and I'm not asking, did you have any opportunity to look back at the 2007 growth policy as to why this particular property was designated suburban residential or whatever it was supposed to be?
I honestly don't know, Frank. It's-
I mean, given the use of that property and what we've known is going to go there forever and ever, I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, I was a little confused too. I don't know, Dave, I think it might have been before Dave's time, but Dave might have some ideas.
Yeah, that wasn't the only property that had that designation that was zoned, you know, general commercial in that B2 district. There's quite a few properties at that end before Highway 40. You know, my only hunch is that it was, you know, our former planning director's call to put that in place when that growth policy was developed.
Okay. Richard?
Dave, how does this comport with at least the preliminary work that's being done on the Highway 93 corridor?
Well, we haven't really looked at the future land use maps, per se, of that segment. But I mean, I don't, I wouldn't foresee that, you know, remaining suburban residential in areas that already have that zoning. I mean, it just doesn't seem logical. So yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see an issue particularly with zoning this B2. I mean, if this would have come through on the consent agenda, we would have recommended it be B2, that's what it was when it was in our jurisdiction before. It's the comparable zoning, Montana state law actually, you know, requires us to make it comparable zoning when we do annex things that are outside our city limits, so yeah, I don't see an issue with zoning that B2.
Because it seems to me that, I've heard voiced, lots of public concern that we once had a forested corner there, and now we're likely to see an asphalt corner. And that's, annexation as a WB2 would promote that, am I correct?
Well, currently it's County B2, so they could develop it without any oversight from us, whether it's annexed in, you know, at least have to go through Architectural Review Committee and, you know, conform to our standards.
Further questions for staff? Dave, I would ask Craig this question, but he's obviously not here tonight. Currently, our water is extended to Highway 40, yet our sewer is on the west side of the highway, a couple hundred yards to the north, correct?
Yeah, it's pretty close to that area, the water is. I think the sewer's on the other side of the highway.
On the east side?
Yeah.
Okay. Given the council hasn't changed its policy decision on extending services south of Highway 40, when we did discuss that, it was when we revised our extension of services plan, does this would consenting to this annexation and conditioning this annexation in any way, Angie or Dave compel the council to necessarily change that policy?
No, I wouldn't think so.
No, it's, this is north of Highway 40, so it wouldn't affect that policy.
Okay. Just a reminder to the council, this isn't subject to a public hearing this evening. You did hear from the applicant's representative, David DeGrandprey, earlier during our communications from the public.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution 19-12, a resolution extending the corporate city limits of the city of Whitefish, Montana to conditionally annex the boundaries, within the boundaries of the city approximately 5.4 acres of land known as 6045 Highway 93 South.
Thanks, Frank. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Secuted by Counselor Henin. Frank, would you like to speak to your motion?
This has always been considered part of the city, it's always been WB2. I see this giving the city a little more control, or at least some voice in how this is developed. This is a no-brainer in my view, and I for one would like us to reconsider whether or not we should amend our Extension of Services Plan to potentially annex property south of Highway 40. That's just my personal view.
Thanks, Frank. Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Michelle, thanks for coming tonight, David. We'll move on to item 6B of the agenda, which is a consideration of a request from Don Koltzschmidt of Eagle Enterprises LLC for a conditional use permit to add approximately 2,250 square feet to an existing building located at 6219 Highway 93 South, Zone WB2, and I am out of order, I apologize. I skipped right over item 6A. We'll get to Don's application here momentarily, but we'll start with item 6A, which is a consideration of a request by Heidi Schley Jacobson for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment located at 1660 West Lake Shore Drive, currently zoned WR1, which is our one-family residential district, and this will be WCRP 19-07. Good evening, Bailey.
Good evening, sorry about that. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment behind an existing single-family residence. The accessory apartment will be located above a proposed single-car garage at the rear of the subject property. The garage was actually under construction when the owner decided to change the plans to include an accessory apartment, so that's why you see in the picture that it's partially, partially built. The building will meet all setback size and height requirements and will access off an existing driveway on the southwest side of the property. The property is approximately a little over 19,000 square feet. As I said, it does have an existing single-family residence on it. It's surrounded by residential uses that are all Zone WR1, and the property is Zone WR1, which is our one-family residential district. And the purpose of this district is for residential purposes to provide for single-family dwellings in an urban setting. The growth policy designation for this area is suburban residential, which actually does not correspond to the WR1. The zoning districts for that designation are WCR, WER, and WSR zoning. It will be connected to all city services and utilities. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners within 150 feet of the property on May 31st. We also emailed advisory agencies and placed a legal in the paper. I had no comments at the time that I wrote my staff report, but you'll notice in your packet, I did receive one comment from Fish Wildlife and Parks after the packet went out before Planning Board that they had no comment on the project, so. We review conditional use permits based on the criteria in our zoning regulations, and I'm just going to kind of hit the highlights of them. So the growth policy, future land use map designates the parcel, as I said, within the suburban residential designation. The intent of this area being designated suburban residential instead of the urban, which would be the designation that complies with the WR1, was to maintain the area surrounding Whitefish Lake to be more rural and limit the amount of subdivision and the high-impact land uses that are typically associated with those urban designations, which are the WLR, WR1, and WR2 zoning districts. However, the current WR1 zoning is consistent with the intent of the suburban residential designation. Their proposal will have to comply with the criteria outlined in our performance standards for accessory apartments. Those require the owner to maintain the permanent, this is their permanent residence, or the permanent residence in the primary dwelling if they propose to rent or lease the apartment. And that's what required is deed restriction, which is proposed as a condition at the end of my staff report. The use is accessory to a single-family home, the accessory apartment will meet or exceed the setbacks required for an accessory structure, and these would be confirmed at the time of building permit. And the subject property does comply with both the minimum lot size and lot width requirements of the WR1 zoning. So our zoning regulations require two parking spaces for the single-family unit and one parking space for the accessory apartment, and the proposed lot does provide adequate space to accommodate all the parking needs on site. There is an existing attached garage to the single-family house, which does hold some spaces, as well as additional room in the driveway to accommodate any parking requirements. The property is currently serviced by municipal sewer. All connections will be required to be reviewed by the Public Works Department prior to issuance of a building permit. Store and water drainage also will be required to be reviewed by the Public Works Department at the time of a building permit application as well. Traffic impacts are anticipated to be minimal, since it does have an existing single-family residence located within an existing neighborhood with similar uses. The accessory apartment will meet the lot coverage and height standards of the zoning and will be similar to the existing adjacent residential uses in the neighborhood. In order to meet their reduced setbacks, which they are proposing, their reduced setbacks for the 600-square footprint, they will have to be, or the apartment will have to be completely detached from the existing single-family residence, which it will be because it's quite further away from the existing house, in order to reduce the bulk and scale of the building. So, staff recommended approval of the conditional use permit application, subject to 11 conditions that were attached to my staff report. The Planning Board met on June 20th and considered the request. There were no members of the public that spoke at that meeting, and those draft minutes were attached for your packets as well. Following the hearing, the Planning Board did unanimously recommend approval of the request, and I included a proposed motion for you at the end of my transmittal. I'm happy to answer questions for you.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey on her staff report? Richard?
Does the existing garage have an ADU above it?
I do not believe so, no.
Thanks, Bailey. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 6A of the agenda, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Anyone wishing to provide comment, please approach the podium and your name and address for the record, please.
(inaudible)
Yes, if it's related to this item, then we had public comment at the beginning of the meeting, so.
(inaudible)
Is there any comment from the public on this particular item? Any public comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion or a discussion. Ryan?
I would move to approve a request from Heidi Jacobson for a conditional use permit to construct an accessory apartment located at 1660 West Lake Shore Drive, Zone WR1, one-family residential district, WCRP 19-07.
Is there a second to the motion? Secuted by Counselor Hartman. Ryan, would you like to speak to your motion at all? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? Now we will move on to item 6B, which is the consideration of a request from Don Koltzschmidt of Eagle Enterprises LLC for a conditional use permit to add 2,250 square feet to an existing building located at 6219 Highway 93 South, which is Zone WB2, which is our secondary business district. Wendy?
Good evening. So again, the request is for a conditional use permit. In the WB2, it says if you're going to get a building that's 15,000 square feet or larger, you need a conditional use permit, or if the building is going to expand to exceed that 15,000 square foot, you have to have a conditional use permit, so that's why we're here tonight. So they are adding 2,250 square feet to the existing body shop. Access to the site will not be modified with this application. The site's about a little more than eight acres, surrounded by all commercial and residential uses. Again, it's an existing car dealership with associated commercial uses in several buildings. The zoning is WB2 with a land use designation of general commercial, served by all public services and facilities. We did notice adjacent landowners and advisory agencies, and we didn't receive any comments on this proposal. We review conditional use permits according to the criteria in the zoning regulations. The proposed use complies with the growth policy, it complies with the zoning regulations because all the zoning standards are met or will be met with conditions of approval. The site is suitable because there's adequate usable area for the proposed use and emergency access will continue to be met. There's adequate parking, traffic circulation has been evaluated, and the landscaping meets the standards. All public services and facilities are adequate, and it's not anticipated to have a negative neighborhood impact. In addition, it's compatible to the neighborhood and community because of the building's mass scale is similar to surrounding buildings, and will have to go to Architectural Review. So the Planning Board did hold a public hearing on June 20th, the applicant's representative spoke at the hearing, the minutes are attached for your review. Following the hearing, the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval, subject to seven conditions of approval. Just to hit some of those highlights, we're conditioning that all onsite lighting must be dark-skY compliant if they're adding anything. Any changes to refuse location would need to be reviewed by Public Works and Republic Services. We'll review compliance of the landscaping chapter at the time of building permit, and they will have to come to Architectural Review Committee. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thanks, Wendy. Any questions for Wendy on her staff report? Any questions? Richard?
How is the landscaping going to change from the current landscaping?
We'll just review it just to make sure that they have adequate onsite.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions? Thanks, Wendy. We did advertise for a public hearing on item six B, and we'll hold that public hearing now. Greg, do you have anything to add? Is the applicant's representative, and then we'll turn back to the public for comments.
Greg Schaefer. I'm actually an employee at Don K. in charge of the body shop service in that. My address is eight forty-seven Highway eighty-two in Summers, but I spend most of my time here in Whitefish. So do you have any further questions as far as the expansion of that body shop that is much needed for the amount of customers that we have?
Thanks, Greg. Any questions for Greg on the application? Not seeing any. Richard?
What are we currently doing, and will this in any way change that, in terms of water dispersal on what looks to be then eighty acres of impervious surface?
Well, the good thing is, is when we put the Subaru dealership in there, they did the engineering for any of the water runoff. So that whole parking lot, the body shop expansion is currently asphalt as it is, and so that whole area was already engineered for water runoff, because there's right to what would be the north of that expansion, there is the aspen trees and the gravel area where there is a water collection area, and then it's piped over to the engineered areas when we put the Subaru dealership in. So that whole area has already been calculated for that water runoff. Does that help?
Yeah, and then what about potential or existing contaminants from a body shop that may enter that water source?
So the nice thing about that twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet is there's no drains in that area. In that portion of the body shop, it's all dry, so there isn't anything that goes, and it's gonna go into any drainage as a part of the body shop environment. And so there's no fear of that happening at all.
Follow-up. Previously, we've had people complain about odors from body shops, not necessarily yours, but this has potential. How will you mitigate that?
So I've been there well over fourteen years, and as you say, we have never gotten any complaints of any odors from the body shop. The equipment that is in today's body shops is very environmentally friendly. It has massive filters, carbon filters, other filters, to keep any of the isocyanides and things like that from entering the environment. That's, that's part of, when they build the equipment, they have to build it that way. And so to my, I've been there a long time. I haven't had any complaints in over fourteen years, and we've had a lot of residents move in behind us with no complaints, so I don't see that happening.
And then how would those, are those filters disposed of? Do they just go to the landfill?
Oh, gosh, no. We're hired, we hire Safety Clean. You can't do it that way. They are disposed of in containers. Safety Clean comes and picks them up, and then they are disposed of in hazardous waste facilities that are generally in the Oregon area, where they have, that's where that stuff is transported to. Nothing makes it to our landfill, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Any further questions for Greg? Greg, anything else to add?
No. Thank you for considering it, and we appreciate that.
Thanks for coming tonight. Any public comment on this item this evening? Any public comments? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion.
I'll move to approve W C U P nineteen dash ten, or is it nineteen dash? No. Yeah, is that right? Okay. Nineteen dash ten. The findings of fact in the staff report and the seven conditions of approval is recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board on June twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Williams. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks for coming tonight. Good luck with the project. We'll move on to item six C of our agenda, which is a consideration of a request from Louise Fisher for a preliminary plat for a fifteen-lot subdivision known as Mountain Brook Subdivision, located at one three three Armory Road, currently undeveloped land, which is Zone W L R, which is our one-family limited residential district. Bailey?
Hi. Okay, so the applicant is proposing a fifteen-lot residential subdivision on a total of seven point four six acres. The subdivision will be all single-family lots. Gross density of the subdivision is two point zero one dwelling units per acre. The lots range in size from fifteen thousand square feet to a little over nineteen thousand square feet. Lots will each have frontage along a new publicly maintained road that would connect to Armory Road at both the north and south ends. The applicant is requesting to pay cash in lieu of parkland dedication, instead of creating an HOA park, and I'll get into that in a minute, and they are requesting two subdivision variances as part of the project, and I'll get into that in a little bit further later as well. So the property is located at one thirty-three Armory Road. It is currently vacant. It's Zone W L R, which is our one-family limited residential district. It's surrounded by residential uses on all sides, and all of that area is Zone W L R as well. It will be connected to city utilities and services. We did mail a notice to adjacent landowners within three hundred feet of the parcel, since it's a major subdivision, that buffer is bigger. On May twenty-ninth, we posted a sign on the property as well, noticed advisory agencies, and placed a legal in the pilot on June fifth. I had four comments that were received in opposition to the project at the time of my staff report, with concerns regarding increased traffic on Armory Road, increase in impervious surfaces, which could impact existing drainage, potential for high groundwater, approval of the subdivision with the DEQ issue, proposed tree removal, and loss of wildlife habitat. I did also receive one comment today, and I handed that out at your seats this evening as well. So we review the project in accordance with statutory criteria and our zoning regulations and subdivision regulations, and I'll just try to hit the highlights for you guys. So the fire marshal has reviewed the project in conformance with the city's adopted fire codes. The applicant will be required to install fire hydrants approximately three hundred feet apart on the new public street. Additionally, the future driveway for Lot Five, which is considered a flag lot, and actually, I'll better picture, the plan for people. The future driveway for Lot Five, which is considered a flag lot, will need to include a turnaround, or the building will need to be sprinkled, and that's due to the length of the driveway from a potential fire hydrant. The proposed new public street will be sixty feet wide, dedicated right-of-way, with a paved twenty-four foot wide drivable surface, and emergency services will be able to access the subdivision from Armory Road at either end of the new public street. The property is currently heavily forested, but the majority of trees and existing vegetation would be cleared for development of the public street and potential building sites. The applicant has provided a tree preservation plan with the application, documenting the number of trees to be saved during construction. And I would like to point out that the applicant's technical representative did provide an updated tree preservation plan with the lots. That's what I'm currently showing, and that was included in your packet on page two seventy-one, and it shows where the actual lots are, the building sites that comply with where our setbacks are, and then the trees that would be saved. So that just was updated. I'd like to point that out for you guys. The proposed lots must meet all fire department emergency access requirements. Any open spaces must be properly mitigated for wildland fire protection and maintained yearly. We are recommending two notes be placed on the face of the plat regarding development within the wildland urban interface, and also recommending a condition that a vegetation management plan be developed for the subdivision and be reviewed by the Whitefish Fire Marshal. As I said, the lots would access off a newly created public street connecting to Armory Road, which is also a city-maintained street, or excuse me, city-maintained road. No frontage improvements are being required along Armory Road. A previous subdivision, which actually created this parcel or broke off a lot for it, did pay cash in lieu of sidewalks along both the Armory Road frontages, so no additional cash in lieu is required at this time. And the final engineering plans for the new public street would be reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department prior to any construction, and definitely before final plat. The road has to be in prior to final plat. The proposed subdivision would generate approximately a hundred and fifty total daily trips, so no traffic impact study was required since it's less than our two hundred trip threshold. There are no mapped crucial wildlife habitat or seasonal migration corridors on the site, but it is likely that deer and other animals do frequent the property, as it is located on the edges of city limits and heavily forested. There is no surface water located on the property. The applicant did do groundwater monitoring prior to the application submittal, and those results were included as part of the packet. Public Works will review the groundwater monitoring results with the engineering plans submitted prior to construction of any infrastructure, and obviously, the groundwater results impact stormwater and just the road placements in general. The majority of the site is, does have slopes that are less than ten percent. However, there are some areas with slopes between ten and thirty percent. So a geotechnical report was also submitted with the application, and further review of the engineering plans would also look at that information with the Public Works Department review. The proposed public street would equal over five thousand square feet of impervious area, so the applicant will be required to submit an engineered stormwater management plan for approval by the Public Works Department. A preliminary drainage plan was submitted with the application, showing the proposed stormwater detention area near the intersection of Armory Road on the northwest side. If you're looking at the map, it's that first lot, right at the very bottom of the page. Final approval of the design, including all the required calculations to size the detention area, that would occur after preliminary plat is approved, if it's approved by council, and then the installation would be required prior to the application for final plat. City water is located within the Armory Road right-of-way. Can't say ours tonight. The applicant is proposing to extend a water main within the proposed new city road to create a loop system that would connect to both ends of Armory Road, and then individual service lines would extend off of that new water main. All water facilities will be designed and constructed to city specifications and require approval by Public Works Department and Montana Department of Environmental Quality prior to installation. Approval of this project obviously may be subject to delays and additional review and discussion by M D E Q staff, since they're not approving subdivision approvals right now. The project does propose also to connect this existing city sewer, which is also located with Armory Road, and all facilities will be designed and constructed to city specifications as well. As I said, no frontage improvements are being required along Armory Road at this time. The new street will be required to comply with our engineering standards for public streets, and that does include street trees, streetlights, and sidewalks. The applicant is requesting a variance, or two variances, and I'll get to that again in a minute. It's kind of the end of my, of my report. The subdivision regulations do require the applicant to provide a parkland dedication. Since the lots are less than half an acre in size, it's eleven percent of the net acreage of the subdivision, which comes out to around twenty-six thousand eight hundred square feet, or point six one five acres. Since the parkland is greater than ten thousand square feet, but less than one acre in size, the subdivision regulations require the area to be set aside as an HOA park or Homeowners Association park. However, the request did go before the Parks Board on May fourteenth, and they made a recommendation that they would prefer cash in lieu of parkland dedication, as the subject property is close to Armory Park and within that same district. So the growth policy does identify the parcel as suburban residential on the future land use map, and this designation generally corresponds to the W C R, W E R, and W S R zones, which typically are for lots greater than twenty thousand square feet. But the property is Zone W L R, and that requires a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet. However, this designation is also for single-family residential in the periphery of the urban service area, and the W L R zoning limits the lots to only single-family as well. So it is meeting the same intent as the suburban residential designation. The proposed lots would comply with the zoning designation. Setbacks in lot coverage requirements would be confirmed at the time of building permit application. So the variant, the last thing is the two variance requests. So they're requesting two variances to the subdivision regulations. One is regarding public streets to be constructed to city standards, and the other is regarding sidewalks on both sides of the private road. So standard city right-of-way for a public street is sixty feet wide. The applicant is showing partial compliance with the right-of-way, because at the northwest end of the public street, it is sixty feet wide, but at the southern end of the, or the little kind of flag portion there, at that southern end, the property is only fifty-nine point seven four feet. They are three inches too short of the sixty-foot right-of-way. So that's why I say they're showing partial compliance, because part of the road is sixty and one's at fifty-nine point seven. They are also showing partial compliance with the requirement for sidewalks on both sides of the public street. They are requesting to install a sidewalk on only one side of the new street in areas where there are lots on only one side of the street. If lots are proposed on both sides, then they are showing sidewalks on both sides of the street. And they are proposing crosswalks that would be provided to connect the different pieces to each other. So the criteria for reviewing subdivision variances, I'm just gonna hit the highlights of those. So the, it's, as I said, it's generally in compliance with the city standards for our public street right-of-way. The property is irregularly shaped and is considered infill. The portion of the road that's less than sixty feet wide is at that southern property line, where it's not feasible to acquire the additional three inches necessary to gain the full compliance. And final review of the engineering plans will be completed by the Public Works Department after preliminary plat approval. The requests to deviate from the standards are not based on a financial hardship. As I said, it does have a unique shape. It was created through previous adjacent developments, which can't be modified. Approval of the variance would not cause a substantial increase in public costs, because the public road will comply with all other requirements for public streets, and the variances would not place the subdivision in nonconformance with any other adopted regulation or city policy. So staff is recommending that the council adopt the findings for the staff report and the variances to be approved. So finally, we are recommending approval of the application. My original staff report dated April twenty-second had eighteen conditions of approval attached. The planning board met on June twentieth to consider their request. The applicant and their representative were present at that meeting to answer any questions. There were eight members of the public that spoke at the meeting, again with concerns regarding stormwater drainage, removal of trees and vegetation, privacy, future upgrades to Armory Road, and those draft minutes were attached as part of your packet. The board did recommend the addition of one condition, condition nineteen, and that was on the transmittal there, that a tree preservation plan be codified as part of the C C and Rs, and that the developer is required to identify specific building envelopes on each lot to preserve those trees. Ps and Rs. And then the other thing I would like to note that you probably read in the minutes, so they had a lengthy discussion regarding the tree preservation plan, and whether or not if we put it in the C C and Rs, if it's enforceable, and how we can, how we can hold that tree preservation plan and mitigate some of those adjacent landowner concerns. So we discussed enforcement with C C and Rs, with the city attorney. Obviously, the city does not enforce C C and Rs, but we are recommending that it still could be included as a condition of approval. That would just be something the future HOA would then be involved with and have to take on themselves. We are recommending, and that was the other piece of paper at your, at your stations this evening, we are recommending an additional condition number twenty, and that is, actually comes out of our zoning regulations, that states that trees, or the condition that we are proposing is that no trees be removed on individual lots, other than those necessary for road or stormwater improvements, what comes out of the engineering, final engineering plans. Obviously, we don't know the exact for those, but that no trees be removed on individual lots until building permit has been approved. lots until building permit has been approved, and that comes out of our zoning regulations that we have that. So we are recommending that that be included as well to try to help mitigate those concerns. But we are recommending approval, and the planning board ultimately did also recommend approval unanimously of the project as well, so. And I'm happy to go into more detail with anything, so.
Thanks, Bailey. Any questions for Bailey under staff report? Richard?
Bailey, if I read it correctly, just the roads themselves will create 5,000 square feet of impervious surface. Is that correct?
Well, the road is easily over 5,000, just the public road itself. So obviously, then, they're going to have to look at the stormwater for everything. Individual lots, though, that just would depend on what size home they're building and the driveway and things like that.
On average, what would that add? Any guess?
I have no idea. I know Will's here from TD&amp;H. He might be able to answer that question more than I can, so.
Okay.
But the road definitely is over 5,000.
All right. In the tree retention plan, is there the, I'm worried that if you remove too many trees, for whatever reason, then you subject the remaining trees to wind throw, particularly in what appears to be fairly saturated soils. Has that been a consideration that's been brought in?
I have no nothing. I'm not an expert in that, so I wouldn't be able to answer that question for you.
Okay. Hopefully, there'll be somebody who can.
I was going to say, I'm like, hopefully someone smarter than me.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Further questions for Bailey from council? Frank?
Just a clarification, given the one comment that you submitted to us earlier. Just a clarification because of one of the comments that was submitted to us earlier. We are not being asked to rezone this property in any form or fashion to increase densities or anything else.
Nope. It's zone WLR. I didn't go back and look how far it's zoned, but that whole area of town is all zone WLR.
Thank you.
Not, not anything recent.
Great, thank you.
Andy?
So at the WLR zoning at 15,000 square feet, roughly three lots per acre could be created if the topography allowed for that, which would create 21 lots as opposed to 15?
Yeah, so their density is two dwelling units per acre instead of what could be up to about three.
Thank you, Bailey. Further questions for Bailey? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on item 6C, and we'll hold that public hearing now. I would first ask if the applicant's representative is here and would like to address the council. Welcome, Will.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Will Goodpastor, Technical Representative, TD&amp;H Engineering, 450 Corporate Drive, Kalispell, Montana. We agree with the findings and facts from the staff here, and just if you guys got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I do know that as far as the stormwater modeling, I didn't get the privilege of doing it on this project in particular, but we do take into account those generalized building footprints in those envelopes as well as the roadway for all that stormwater retention.
And what'd you come up with?
That pond, to my understanding, is sized considering that with a building footprint and a driveway.
So all stormwater will be retained on-site?
It is a detention facility, so given Public Works standards, we will retain water and release at its predeveloped states. So you will have an increase in volume of runoff. However, it will not be able to impact the existing system at any rate greater than is already seen.
Further questions? Richard for Will?
Um, not.
We can always come back.
Yeah, I want to come back maybe.
Come back up if you need to. Thanks, Will. Any public comments tonight on this item? I do have a sign-up sheet, and we'll start with Scott Bates, and I have Will Goodpastor as well as Melinda Morrison. And I think we just heard from Will.
Hi, I'm Scott Bates, and I live at 155 Armory Road. And if you look at the plat behind you, it's the, like, acre right where the curb is there right below. And I, I missed the Thursday meeting. I was out of town. I sent in some emails, comments, and one of the concerns I have is public safety. After living here 29 years, which all you all know, this is a high-density recreation area, and Armory Road is, is one of the main recreation areas out of town for bikers, skateboarders to go up to skate park, kids on bikes and on Armory Road, and just in general, it's a big recreation street. And in Armory Road itself, if you do the research on it, is 22 to 24 feet wide. It's an old county road. It's never been widened, and what they did is just paved over a gravel road. So in, if you go out and recreate on Armory Road, I walk my dogs out there. If there's two cars coming opposite directions, it's so narrow, if somebody's walking down on the side, on the very side of Armory Road, those, one of those cars, both cars have to stop, not the, whoever's walking, go by because it's so narrow. So that's a real public safety concern. And as far as the speed there, it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit, and none of those people from the corner where that's, where the new proposed subdivision would be down to the end of Armory, go 25 miles an hour. Most of them do, try to do 40 in there. And rather than stand here and complain about that, I'm proposing a solution for the city of Whitefish. And what I would propose is that street that goes through Mountain Brook that's proposed is, they said, one sidewalk. And what I would propose is a bike path instead of that sidewalk. It was a safety thing to get those people off the Armory Road where, before the corner, and just in general, it would, it would be a good place for those people to go for recreation. And then in your future planning for Armory Road, where that comes out on halfway up that hill, would be to extend that bike path up to Armory itself. And that way, protect those people, because I have a real concern for kids riding out there, skateboarders. They go right down the middle of the street, just in general, just to make it safer for the public that use Armory Road. But that would be a solution to get, to take some of those recreational, high-density recreational traffic off of there. And also, we're talking about the tree preservation plan. There's some oak growth ponderosa pine behind our house, and there's, there are some of the few ponderosa pine left in the city of Whitefish. And the ones they took off from the Coffin subdivision over there next to railroad tracks and go to the end of Armory Road, they were supposed to save those, and they, they cut those. And that was part, I went to the original meetings on those, and, and your concern about saving those trees later and having some sort of enforcement, it doesn't, what I saw, it didn't happen. Those trees got cut down. And that was the other part of the ponderosa pine oak growth in there, and those are now gone. So, and we like those trees, just so we can see them, but. And then as far as the wildlife, that is a wildlife corridor because our neighbor put up game cam because he had chickens that were disappearing. And then, and the game cam showed two fox coming, got his chickens, a black bear, a cougar, and all kinds of deer. And this is just a spring, so it is a pretty high-density wildlife area, but those wildlife will be displaced. But my main concern is the public safety. And then the trees, and then also the drainage. The way I understand drainage is and storm sewers is most, most of the storm drainage will come down to the road, and the storm sewers are actually in that street there. And our, there's three, there's four lots right directly behind our house. You look at the plat there, that there's no storm drainage as far as the sewer drainage or, not sewer, but you know, storm drainage right there. And it's about a 20% slope. It's clay soils. I'm a forester, I know there's spruce trees in there that, that's a real wet area. We have a spring in our backyard, and so our sump pump normally runs, oh, two winters ago, or two springs ago, when we had that real wet winter, a lot of snow, it ran for a solid month every 15 minutes. So it runs like two or three weeks every 15 minutes for all that to drain out of there. So I have a concern how they're going to engineer that those four lots there, they're going to be draining right directly into our house. We have French drains in there, two sump pumps, and those run all the time. And, and the French drain is, I got that behind our shop there, but I didn't, I haven't heard anybody say how they're going to deal with that. And the perk test I saw go out and do this spring was done, there wasn't much runoff this spring, very little. So the perks tests are going to be deceptive. There's a lot more runoff there than what they would show this spring, so. But those are my main concerns. I would just ask that you consider the, using that bike trail as the main thing, you know, for the public safety thing that wouldn't impact that developer that much, but same time, it'd be more effective use than a sidewalk because it'd be more of the recreation traffic rather than just somebody walking. So it'd be more designed for taking bikes, skateboards, or just in general, more people, so more varied recreation. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate your comments tonight. I have Melinda next. Certainly, if you didn't sign up, that doesn't preclude you from the opportunity to comment.
Good evening. My name's Melinda Morrison. I live at 170 Armory Road with my husband, Bruce. I don't know if you guys had a chance to review the letter that we sent to the planning board. We live on the southwest side of Armory Road, and we are the direct recipient of all the drainage practically from Armory Road, especially the north side or the east side of Armory Road where this subdivision is being proposed. There's one culvert on Armory Road, and it ends at the top of our property. It's two feet below the surface. The city, we actually, two years ago, I contacted Karen Hilding about it because we've had, we've lived at the property for 16 years, and we've experienced flooding and water coming when we have high spring runoff. The water just inundates, comes down our driveway, and comes out of that culvert. And the city didn't even know about that culvert. I, it was put in years and years ago by the county. The city has never maintained it. They've never come out. They've never cleaned it out. They, I don't think they even know where it is. And it's disturbing to me that we are, I, I understand the city needs to do infill zoning and, and development, and I, I can appreciate that. But I also feel like as a tax, someone who's paid property taxes for 16 years and all the people that live on Armory Road that are taxpayers, but our road and our infrastructure is not being addressed. But we can go ahead and let 15 more houses be built, and, you know, I mean, the, the consequences to the existing homeowners are just ignored. It's, it's, I haven't heard one word from the city about what they are planning to do to remediate this, this issue. And I am on the record right here. I want to know, what is the city going to do about this? And why, why do we have to, my husband is the one who's out there digging and cleaning it out and, and putting in a rock, like, rockway to divert the water away from our house. That, that's not our responsibility. And if you add 15 more houses, even if you have the stormwater, there's still going to be a lot of, of, of water. There's going to be an increase of volume, and that is what the engineer said. All that volume's going to end up on our property. So I, I'm, I'm concerned about the city's appetite to just keep moving forward with all this development before addressing existing infrastructure needs. So I would really appreciate it if you could consider that before you consider approving this subdivision. Thank you.
Thanks, Melinda, for your comments tonight. Real briefly, Scott, you have to approach the podium. Please be brief.
I can verify what she just said about the storm drain. In fact, I, my comments, I invited some of the people from the planning to come out and look at that, and I think one of them did, but that's true. I, there's, there's like an eight-inch pipe that drains all that Armory Road, you know, above the Armory there, or the Armory Road just above there. And so that needs to be addressed, especially more water coming down there because it goes right in their front yard. And I've, I've actually had to go out there and clean that, and I've had to tell people in another planning meeting that there was a drain there that goes into Cal Creek. But that's, that's been 15 years ago, and that's never been addressed, so I can just verify what she said.
Thanks, Scott.
That's something they need to look at.
Thank you. Further public comment tonight on this item? Further public testimony? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion. I have a question, Dave. Years and years ago, we discouraged flag lots, and I recall that vividly. I believe it was probably when Bob Horn was the planning director, and more recently, we've approved flag lots down Armory, and now I understand that we're considering that again this evening. I guess my question to staff was, what was the rationale, you know, I'm, I'm talking eight to 10 years ago now, for discouraging flag lots? And I can imagine it's related to emergency services access, and why are we now changing our policy direction on that in recent years?
I mean, yeah, typically, flag lots, you know, they do create issues because they are, you know, more difficult to access. They don't have direct frontage on a road. We have certain requirements for driveways that have to meet certain standards. A lot of times, flag lots will be required to be sprinkled when they're built because of the access issues. The code does discourage them. It doesn't outright prohibit them. You know, obviously, with infill, you do end up with flag lots a lot of times just because of the way things are configured. And so, but in general, you know, I mean, the majority of these lots have direct access. There's one flag lot.
One flag lot?
Yeah.
Which lot number is that?
Yeah, lot five. I can't read it on the tree preservation plan, but it's the one in the top-left corner.
Yep.
I found the subdivision section on the flag lots. So it says, and this is, it's in our subdivision standards under lots, and it says, "Flag lots are allowed with a creative design in either infill subdivisions or new subdivisions, provided that the flag lots meet fire department standards and comprise no more than 50% of the total lots within the subdivision." So I think we want to limit it. And like Dave said, there is only one, and it's that lot five that kind of comes off at an angle there, so.
And Joe, during site review, you didn't see any issues with that in terms of fire access, the ability to respond to an emergency?
If they weren't able to meet the standard, they're going to be required to sprinkle that building.
Okay. Richard?
I'm really concerned about the additional impact on the Morrison property. If we're increasing flow, if it's already an issue, whether or not, and I'm trying to think of a way to condition, and I don't know if we can, Bailey, to prohibit more runoff short of reconstructing Armory Road.
So what, what Craig talked about, planning board, was Armory Road is unfortunately a couple of years out as far as road reconstruction. It is on the list. I mean, that's.
But not in the next five years.
But not in the next few things, and that's what he said. And from what I understand at the stormwater is that's the whole purpose of the detention area, is that, the way Doug explained it, and I'm not an engineer, so I apologize, but the way I understand it is that if you are discharging currently at one unit and the subdivision is, say, creates five units, it can only still release at one unit. So they have to maintain that stormwater so that it's the same amount of water will come out at the, it might just be a longer time period, but it's the same amount of water. That's what I understood it to be. But I don't think we can require off-site improvements. But I don't think we can require off-site improvements, is my understanding, based on, you know what I mean, it's, it's too far out of, out of the realm. I kind of wish Craig was here.
So instead of one or two months of water going down the driveway and through the front yard, it might be six months? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's my understanding. I don't, but I'm not an engineer, I can't say. Will might have better explanations as well for that, but, yeah. But my concern is more of, I don't, I don't believe when I talk to Craig that we can require the developer to do improvements to that culvert because it is too far down. It's within their review, within their drainage, but it's, it's requiring off-site improvements that aren't connected to the subdivision, is my understanding.
But if they wanted to be a good neighbor, they could, right?
Yes. But Will might be able to explain that more, so.
I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge Will. If there's no additional questions from council, could you elaborate a bit on the stormwater analysis that was conducted and some of the results? And I would like you to specifically address Melinda's concerns. I look at the, the site plan and it's very clear to me that the entire property slopes in the direction of her property, and I'd just like you to address that as well, please.
There's a little better visual if you've got the third page of that proposed preliminary plat. It shows the storm drainage a little bit more clearly without the trees. But we do extend down the south into the property to capture all of the lots. So all of those houses and driveways will be captured into the roadway storm drainage system and bring it on over to the west side at the retention, or detention pond. I think Bailey had a good example of it as far as the flow rates with the examples of units leaving the property. She's correct. If we, we go in and assess the property as it sits today, it does make one unit of runoff. You can only produce one unit of runoff, that's why you have to provide the volume to, to help accommodate that change in flow rate. And with that, any of those detention pond facilities are required to drain down in 72 hours. So you're not going to have, take three months of rain and make it six months. You still have a 72 hour requirement to make sure it's not a wet pond.
How many hours, sorry?
Seventy-two. And part of that requirement's, you know, mosquitoes, water fowl, things like that, just attracts a whole different, and that is part of public works requirements there, that they be designed like that.
What's, what storm frequency was modeled?
We do a two, a 10, and a 100-year storm from Quincy.
And is it designed based on the two, 10, or 100?
Yep, yep. And there will be a flow control structure as part of that with different orifice sizes to mimic the two, 10, and 100 year. Bailey is also correct. You have to take a quarter mile look downstream for impacts there. But things is that culvert's within the quarter mile, it is not within private, or the project right away.
Have you evaluated that culvert as part of your analysis?
I have not personally.
Did your company?
So I didn't get the privilege of doing the storm drainage on this one, so.
Did your company?
Yes, yeah, they have looked at that already. So like I said, as far as we've, we've done with our initial analysis and the preliminary plat, that pond is appropriately sized for what we've got.
In terms of the, the city's culvert, were there any recommendations in your report that would compel or encourage the city to address our deficient stormwater infrastructure?
For art, for us to do our job, we're not allowed to make any more runoff go to that. So if, unfortunate if there is an existing failure of that culvert, we're not allowed to increase those flows at all, so that existing condition will remain existing, if that makes sense.
It does, yeah, thank you. Further questions for Will while he's at the podium?
Yeah, well, so kind of back to Richard's question and Ms. Morrison's concern, so it is a possibility that instead of one to two months of constant water, it could turn into five to six months of constant water?
No, that's, so I was trying to explain that pond after every rain event has to drain down within 72 hours to be a functioning design based on public works standards.
So there would be a 72-hour gap?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
So you, and this is for the 100-year event, so 100-year storm event hits this property, it fills that pond up to the brim, it has to be gone in 72 hours and meet pre-existing flow rate conditions. So you have to size that to have a big enough footprint to soak in while releasing at pre-existing.
So you're considering in that analysis the outflow?
Yep.
From the facility, but also infiltration?
Yeah, so if I've got that basin there and it has that one unit of runoff, but I'm getting 100-year storm and I'm getting it, you know, faster than that, you know, I have to provide that storage up to five units while still letting out at one and make that 72-hour drawdown period.
Okay. In, in your professional opinion, I know the area well, it's, you know, poorly drained, lean clay soils, low infiltration rates, the groundwater during the spring sits in those road ditches for weeks at a time, as I'm sure you've observed. In your opinion, would that type of facility function to both, of course, outflow, but also infiltrate?
Yeah, and that's kind of the fun part about doing the storm systems is making that little problem work for you. But with the combination of the flow control structure and the size of the detention system itself, it, it accommodates for that.
Further questions for Will, or staff for that matter? Frank?
Just Will follow-up, and I, I hope you guys have addressed this. What, what have you done to address the, what I'll call the properties that are above Scott's, Scott Bates's home and property, where those three or four lots actually would, theoretically, drain down onto his property? What are you doing to prevent any further drainage from those, that development?
To accommodate that, and I'm, I believe he's talking those lots 1, 3, 8, and 10 there in the corner. What we would do there is section off that property and try to get ourselves a swale cut through there, if nothing else a berm, so that water's not sheeting directly in, again, to maintain that pre-existing rate. Easiest way for us to do that is to get it all to the pond and have a, a flow control structure to do so.
Scott, Scott, point of order. We can't have questions from the audience when the applicant's representative is at the podium. Any further questions for Will? Not seeing any, thanks Will. If anything else comes up, we'll call you back up. I had one question for Adam regarding DEQ's quote moratorium on water extensions for new subdivisions. How would this project be affected by that, given what we learned today?
Well, we're going to know better next Thursday. You know, I think it's important to point out, because I hear a lot of people say, "Well, you're maxed out, you're maxed out." We're not maxed out.
Understood.
It's, it's just how the DEQ works things for, for the standards that they have set. So it's much the same as like, currently we're under penalty on our wastewater treatment plant. That just means that we need to be working towards getting it changed, and that's what we're working towards. So there's a couple of other little things that we're trying to, to hammer out with them so that they will lift that moratorium, and we think we have all of the information in hand, we just need to see what happens next Thursday. So I think that's going to be addressed and hopefully favorably in our direction.
But this project would be affected if that moratorium was not lifted?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Anytime we want to extend things like that, it would be.
And in terms of resort tax priorities, where does Armory Road fall in the priorities list? I know it's not within the next five years. Does anyone have that list Dana?
Dana's looking that up real quick. Hopefully we'll have that for you shortly.
Thank you.
I have it as I think sixth one down since State Park is the current one we're on. So there's six more. There's East Edgewood, Texas, East Fifth, Denver, Fourth Street and Fur, and then Armory Road, is what the current list that I have.
So that would be 2027?
Yeah.
Given the two phases of work at State Park?
It's probably even further, it could potentially be further out, that depends on, however, you know, the resort tax committee and Craig and his department are working on reassessing the priority list. So I wouldn't say that this is set in stone. I mean, obviously, it is right now what we're using, but he is working on updating it and will go to the resort tax committee within this year to reassess this list and they'll bring back a recommendation. I'm not sure that that would change where Armory Road is falling on there, but I do know that the next five or so, they're looking at reorganizing based on needs, so, yeah, but you're definitely out, 2027 at a minimum.
Okay.
Question for Adam. I guess it'd be a better question for Craig, but Craig's not here. So if, I guess my question is if Ms. Morrison's stormwater situation gets worse, even though we were told it's not going to get worse, what is her recourse if it does? What does she do?
So my understanding is, is that these, this development is supposed to be engineered in such a way that that doesn't occur.
Okay.
So if it does occur, then that means something went wrong and they need to correct it. And there, we can withhold bird, building permits, we can withhold occupancy permits until such things are corrected.
Okay. And then a follow-up to that is what, what does she do right now? Because obviously this has been a problem for the last 16 years. Who would she talk to at the city to redress, I mean, if, if it's possible? I assume Craig?
Craig, yeah.
Okay.
I've got it on my list of things to talk to Craig about, but kind of sounds like Bailey already talked a little bit about the culvert, so he might know that the culvert at least exists, so.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the impacts that they're observing or experiencing are not related necessarily to development. I mean, this is forested terrain, correct?
Yeah.
So unrelated to existing developments that have been approved in the past and outbuilt, is that correct? Okay. So I think to move this along, we should start with a motion. Andy?
Mr. Mayor, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve WPP 19-09, findings of fact, the staff report, subject to the 19 conditions of approval as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board to us on June 20th, adding a 20th condition as proposed by staff, which shall read, "No trees may be removed on individual lots other than those necessary for road or stormwater improvements until a building permit has been approved pursuant to 11-2-3 B14 of the Whitefish zoning regulations."
Thanks Andy, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Andy, would you like to address your motion?
Um, yeah, I will speak to it briefly. I understand the concerns of the Morrisons, obviously, and I understand Mr. Bates's concerns. Ms. Morrison did say it, I mean, it is a good spot for infill development, obviously there's residential development on both sides of the property. It's a good use of that land, I think. Stormwater is certainly a consideration, but oddly enough, if properly designed, I think the neighbors may find that their stormwater issues improve a little bit, and I know that sounds a little strange, but when they design the stormwater system, they're going to be taking a whole lot of impervious surfaces water and they're going to be retaining that water and they're going to be discharging it at a lower rate, then I'm guessing a lot of that land probably puts out water today, because as you said, those types of soils don't absorb very well, you do get a lot of sheeting on it. And we're going to now suddenly look at a whole lot of impervious surface that that water's going to be captured, collected, held, and discharged at a slower rate potentially. That said, if that system isn't designed properly, if our public works department doesn't do its job, then they are in danger of seeing additional runoff. So I think we do have to rely on the fact that we have a good staff and that we do deal with drainage issues all around town and that we do have a set of standards that deal with stormwater and we make developments adhere to those. So that's all I have to say.
Thanks Andy. Further comments before we vote? Richard?
Sure, I, I would, um, another friendly amendment. That last one was condition 20, Andy?
Uh, that was correct.
Yes.
So this would be condition 21. But I'll need a second in a moment. That the Mountain Brook subdivision road shall be constructed to include a shared bike path to provide a safe bypass for the Armory Road curve.
Is there a second to what will be friendly condition number 21?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Hartman. We will vote first on the added condition, which will be again, condition number 21.
May I ask a question of the, of the motion? Is this in substitute for this one or both of the sidewalks that were, that were already included?
The, no, since it's a shared path, the sidewalk would have to be wider.
So you're just suggesting it'd be a shared path and that the sidewalk?
Yes, and those are usually eight feet in width.
Okay. Richard, just again for everybody's consideration, the one side, or the one side that does not include full sidewalk all the way out to Armory, the reason it was not included is in part because it's not part of the development. And by doing that, we're not going to be eliminating a lot of existing trees that I think all the neighbors appreciate having there, so that's one of the reasons they did not extend that side. But I, I have no opposition to simply requiring the one continuous, or the, the existing sidewalks to be widened to make them joint.
Further comments on the friendly amendment?
That.
We'll vote on that first and then carry back to our original motion. All those in favor of adding condition number 21 as a friendly amendment, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And that carries on a four to two vote with Counselor Fury and Williams voting in opposition, which brings us back to the original motion for approval as amended by conditions number 20 and 21. I'll have one editorial here, and I would hope that if our city infrastructure is in any way causing problems on this individual property owner's property, that we deal with it. That's why we have a stormwater assessment and we need to be more frequently inspecting our infrastructure throughout town. I'm not being critical of our public works department, I think they do a stellar job, but again, in case this is contributing to issues on private property, I think it needs to be addressed as part of the review process with the subdivision. Adam?
Yeah, and that's one of the things I was thinking about mentioning a minute ago too, is that, you know, by increasing that stormwater assessment, we are now building a pool of funds that we can draw and to use for those purposes. Up until this point, I mean, we were just at $12 per household, it really wasn't enough to do individual projects outside of like, complete street reconstructions and things like that. So it's nice that we have that funding source and I'll make sure Craig gets on this.
Thank you. Richard?
Just comment on the motion if I may?
Please.
I am concerned, and I'm going to vote against this, and the reason is that I am very uncomfortable with the downstream stormwater effects. I don't think they've been adequately addressed. And when I hear someone say, "We will try to get da, 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 da," that says good intentions, but we know that good intentions sometimes don't get the product that we're looking for. And so until I can feel more comfortable with the downstream stormwater effects, I will vote against.
Thank you, Richard. Further discussion on the original motion as amended? Frank?
Richard, is there anything that you can think of that we could otherwise require other than the requirement that the stormwater plan meet the city's requirement that no additional stormwater come off that property? I mean, what, what more, I'm just, I'm asking, I, I agree with your concern 100%, I'm, my question is, what condition or what comfort level could you be given?
Yeah, I just haven't seen the, the data on the loading, the stormwater loading. I don't think anybody has taken into consideration the effects of climate change and the increase in the numbers of, or the intensity and the frequency of intense storms. I don't think any of those things have been considered. And I, I just think it's, it's old data and I don't think there's new data yet, if it's out there, I, I think it should be incorporated.
Further comments from the council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And the motion does carry on a four to two vote with Counselors Hildner and Hartman voting in opposition, since that is a majority of the council present, that does pass on a first reading. Thanks very much to everyone for coming tonight, in particular the public for providing comment. comment.
You guys good to go? Or do you want a short break? Break, are you good?
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to what will be item 60 of the agenda, ordinance 19-16, an ordinance rezoning approximately .5 acres of land located at 800 902 and 1,000 Wisconsin Avenue located in section 25. Township 31 North, range 22 West, that is split zone between WRR1, which is our low-density resort residential district, and our WB1, which is our limited business district, to WB1, which is our limited business district, and adopting findings with respect to such rezone. David?
Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. So this request is to rezone three parcels that have a split zoning. The majority of those lots are zoned, our WB1 Limited Business District, the back section of each of those lots, it's 56 feet or so of 1,000 Wisconsin, the back 26 feet of 902 Wisconsin, and about 30 feet of 800 Wisconsin have a WRR1 zoning. That zoning was put in place, previous development there when that was, Tom LaChance had his cabin development on that property that was developed with a PUD. So at that time, since it was a PUD development, the fact that it was split zoned didn't really matter because a PUD is a zoning overlay that basically eliminates the underlying zoning boundaries. That PUD expired and with the current property owners, they want to remedy this issue. One of the main issues is with the zoning code states if properties divided into two-use districts, the property may be utilized in conformance with one zoning district or the other, as long as that use is confined to that portion of the property for which it's zoned, then the remainder has to remain open. And so with that encumbrance on these lots, it limits what can be done. It limits the amount of parking that could happen with the commercial uses on there. The existing car wash building is on that property, it's divided by the zoning property line, so that creates an issue. And then there's an existing coffee stand on that north lot that's all within the WB1 portion. With the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan, it designated the entirety of those three lots as neighborhood commercial, which is the corresponding land use for the WB1. So this particular proposal is conformance with our growth policy. There's an issue with the WB1 in that right now, that whole district is at 7.54 acres and within the WB1 zoning, there's a seven acre maximum for any one area. So the applicant went to the Whitefish Board of Adjustment and asked for a variance and that was approved on June 4th to increase that district from 7.54 acres to eight acres. I would note that a portion of that project, 10,000, 10,600 square feet, they donated to the city for additional right-of-way as part of that quarry development. There's also over an acre that's in the right-of-way of Wisconsin Avenue. So again, it's basically, you know, makes all of these lots WB1, which is in conformance with the growth policy, makes them developable and they have a variance in order to pursue that. We sent out a notice to the neighboring property owners, we received no comments from anyone. There was no comments at the planning board. So under the findings of fact, when we review any zone change, as I mentioned, this is in conformance with the growth policy. The Wisconsin Corridor Plan did designate that as neighborhood commercial. Specifically has policies that talk about increasing densities and key nodes in the corridor. That particular area was designated as a key development area. It was not part of the conditional use permit for the quarry. These lots were not included in that, so they're separate, but under the same ownership. There was a couple of other options that they had to try to remedy this, but this was the only one that was in conformance with the growth policy. As far as other findings, it does promote the interest because public services are available to the property, there's no issues with fire and safety. Any development that happens, new development will require a building permit and review of that. If there's traffic concerns, they'll be addressed with the specific land use that occurs on those lots as they're developed. So staff did recommend approval of this to the Whitefish Planning Board. The planning board reviewed it. Again, no one from the public spoke and then the planning board unanimously recommended approval of this project. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks Dave. Any questions for Dave on his staff report? I have a couple, Dave. Why is this coming to us? Why, why wasn't this addressed during the approval of the CUP?
Well, these lots were not part of the CUP.
They were not part of the CUP, okay. And you indicated that they're currently undevelopable? Can you...
They're, no, they're developable, they're undeveloped. So the two southern lots have no development on them. The northern lot has the existing car wash, which is divided by the zoning boundary and then the, a coffee stand on that property.
But does the split zoning necessarily, maybe this is a question for Will, but does it, do they make them undevelopable or difficult to develop?
Completely, but it limits the, well, it can occur because it limits the, because you can only use that, if you're going to have a commercial use on those lots because of the split zoning, they have to, that use has to incur entirely, entirely on the portion of the lot that has that zoning.
Right.
So that back part of the lot, if you wanted to put parking on there, whatever, you wouldn't be able to.
The WRR1?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Dave? Not seeing any. We did advertise for a public hearing on what will be our ordinance 19-16 and we'll hold that public hearing now. Will, do you have anything to add? For the record, just your name and address, please, when you approach the council.
Uh, Will McDonald, I live at 180 Foner Road, Whitefish. I'll just add a quick, couple things. Right now, we're talking with Cowgirl Coffee on utilizing track 7EC and just with the potential repositioning it and allowing them to sort of look at the property as a whole, it, it just, we could, I don't want to speak for them because they, they could be taking down this track, we're trying to work with them, but giving them a blank piece of paper and then following all of our setbacks and our typical building codes and parking requirements, it just allows them to have a blank canvas and to do something there. We're also working with the Restaurant Group on 7D and what could be done with parking and setbacks. It just allows the potential buyers and owner operators to utilize that property to the best of their ability. Again, this came up and so we're just trying to utilize something here. One thing I just want to reiterate and it came up to us is, you know, that 1.2 acres of the total zone is a Wisconsin right-of-way. So I think, you know, we're trying to work within the confines of the actual zoning district usable acreage. That's all I got.
Thanks, Will. Any questions for Will? Richard?
Is that right-of-way that you're talking about, is that designated as 7DB, 7EF, 7EBA, and 7ECB? Is that what that...
That and also Wisconsin Avenue. So you can ask Dave Taylor, he can give you more information on that, but because of our zoning ordinances, that district actually encompasses all that Wisconsin Avenue, which obviously we can't use. And so the, that zone district that was originally bumped up to 7.54, 1.2 of that is Wisconsin Avenue and the setback. So we're only utilizing 6.3 and we're only trying to bump it up by .25.
Richard, that, those small strips were what the quarry dedicated to the city as part of that quarry development in order to expand Wisconsin Avenue wide enough for a future center turn lane. So they actually gave that, those, that long strip to the city, which are those three lots that you mentioned.
Okay. And, and what would this do for the visual enhancement, vegetation and that sort of thing? Anything? Make it worse, better?
Does zone change?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we don't know what the development's going to occur. They, if any development does occur, it has to meet our, our landscaping requirements in the future.
In the WB1 zone?
Yep.
I don't think there would be any change because they're currently zoned WB1, it would need to meet the landscaping requirements anyway.
Yeah.
Before this request.
And they would also have to go through ARC review for those commercial, I mean, we require, depending upon their square footage, you know, the CUP, but obviously with this commercial construction, they'd have to go through ARC review and landscaping plan, so that would be reviewed.
Will, any interest or land use concepts for lot 7EB? You mentioned, obviously, Cowgirl Coffee and then this potential restaurant group?
One of the things that we have worked with MDOT, they won't give approval to the ingress and egress between 7EB and 7EC, but they do want to see shared access between those two lots. They won't give approval until bu, um, building plans have been submitted to the city, in which case there'll be coordination between MDOT and our Public Works. But we, we did exercise that to utilize that as well, so you don't have three points of egress between 7EC, 7EB, and 7D. And actually, 7D will be turning, 7D and 7EB will have the option of going onto Marina Crest. So we have tried to limit the impervious surfaces, be efficient with our access. Right now, we haven't, 7EB has gotten the least interest of those commercial lots, so, you know, we might be forced with the, or not forced, but we might have the ability to take a look at that and do something with it. But nothing, uh, no decisions have been made at this time.
Okay. I know we can't require this of you, but I will plead my case that I hope when you do consider interested business parties coming forward, that we kind of honor the pattern of development and ownership being, you know, local owner-occupied businesses, non-franchise. And I would really encourage your development group to consider that. That's an area of town that's, that's growing, it's becoming more popular. It's, it's going to be a great asset to the community in general once we see full build-out, especially once the road problems are addressed.
We're working really hard to keep Cowgirl Coffee in there. Obviously, everybody likes that place and again, if this zone change is approved, what we're looking at doing is potentially repurposing the, if it can be saved, the car wash, or we would create a new structure or something. So again, we're all about trying to keep local businesses there.
That might be a tough structure to save.
True.
Thanks, Will.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Any public comment this evening on this item? Any public testimony? Not seeing any. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for discussion or a motion. Katie?
I would move to approve ordinance 19-16, ordinance rezoning approximately .5 acres of land located at 800 902 1,000 Wisconsin Avenue, S25 T31N R22W, that is split zone WRR1 and WB1 to WB1 and adopting the findings with respect to such rezone.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Henin. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and those opposed, like sign and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? Thanks, Will. Folks want a short break, meaning five minutes? We're going to go ahead and recess and we'll reconvene at about nine o'clock. reconvene at about nine o'clock.